Right, first item of business like to do the roll call. Commissioner Clement. Commissioner Brewer here. Commissioner Etchagon.
Here.
Commissioner Mead.
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Couch and I'm here too. All right, and. We'll move to item number three, public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda or are within the. Subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. And is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission. And appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda. Once the item has been called and the chair opens the item to the public. So at this time, we'd like to open for public comment at five thirty two. And I see nobody out there. Christie, anybody emails or anything? No? All right, we will close public comment. At five thirty three P M. Let's move on to item number four, approval of minutes. Commissioners, have you had a chance from the regular meeting October ninth, twenty twenty three to take a look and? Through the minutes?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Clement. Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Etchagon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
And I'm Commissioner Couch and I am I as well. All right, move on to number five. Important recommendations, a request by C V Housing LLC Brett Fugman, Fugman agent to extend approval of major site plan review number. Two zero one six dash zero three. Tended parcel map number two zero two zero dash zero one minor site plan review twenty twenty zero three and accompanying. Planning meeting. There we go. I tried to memorize as much as I could.
Thank you, Steve Brant City Planner. As you said, this is a request for a time extension for an approved project. This was the. It was the commercial and apartment complex. That you approved for Brett Fugman. It's at the southeast corner of Hanford Armona Road and State Route forty one. I think we mentioned this before, the first time he asked for an extension. He just, after he got his approvals, he discovered that he's got some soil issues. On the south part of the site that's making it difficult to figure out. How to. Efficient, well. To to build and stay within his budget. So he's, it sounds like he's worked out something, but he needs a little bit more time and so we're. We're recommending approval of this extension. Wanted to point out in the staff report. Bases the extension off of. Code section nine two A seven. It should actually say eight five F ten. And we will make the change in the resolution for that as well. So this will be a one year extension. Till. November twenty twenty four.
He gets six one year extensions. This is only the second one?
Yeah, because he's, because part of his approval is a parcel map.
Yeah.
And so then the map act applies and the map act says you can get six one year extensions up to six. If you approve them, they're discretionary. You don't have to approve them.
Okay.
And this is kind of the easterly part of that parcel where there's problems with the soil liquefaction or.
Uh huh.
I'm not exactly sure if that was the word you used.
Liquification.
Liqufaction, excuse me. And that's being addressed somehow, I take it.
He's working to address it. Yeah, you have to do different type of foundation and other things. And so he was, at one point, he was totally redesigning the site to avoid the the bad soil and now I'm not. Exactly sure what he's doing. But he says he's got some some plant up his sleeve.
Okay.
Is it, it's an issue with compaction then for the pad or or the shirt?
Yeah, so liquefaction is when, I'm not a soils person, but. It's when you you're you're just unable to compact it to the level that you need to support the building. So. And it's it's just something in the soil that keeps it from being compacted. And so if you try to build on it, eventually the the building's gonna sag. It doesn't, it doesn't occur very much in the Central Valley, but.
There's housing development right up to that point and obviously. They did not run into that or it has not been so issue yet.
And he said it's very localized because it's not on his entire site. It's only on a portion of the site.
I wonder, there used to be maybe a slew there or something in the past. Does anybody know or is just? Just a rarity.
Never know, it could be, could be that, that could be something that it could be something from hundreds of years ago.
Commissioners, I just, we should open up to public comment, even though we don't see anybody here. Just real quick, I'm gonna do that, okay? So I'd like to open public comment on the motion that's proposed. And Christie, anything? Comments or anything like that? Okay, and we'll go ahead and close public comment. All right. Commissioners, continue. So I know a lot of compaction. We have to have it at ninety ninety two percent compaction. And it is hard to do. I know Lennar ran into that out there. Sometimes I know in Colorado, they were having the same issue. They come and remove all the soil and bring in new stuff or just have to go much deeper. So hopefully he finds a solution to it.
So it's a good project. We want it to get.
Yeah. Yep. All right, any other comments or questions? And we can discuss among ourselves or? All right, so we have a request by C V Housing. Do I have any motions to approve the one year extension?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty three dash seventeen. To approve the one year extension of time for major site plan review number twenty sixteen dash oh three. Do I have to mention about the change with the typo there or?
I think you just did.
Okay, I did. Okay. I'll second that motion.
Second, all right. All right, we have a first and a second. Let's go ahead and do a vote. Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Etchagon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
And I'm Commissioner Couch and I vote I as well. All right. We can move on to item number six, discussion, possible amendments to the zoning ordinance and city development standards. Steve.
Yes, so as you're aware, in twenty twenty three, our focus was on looking at our residential. Standards. We had a grant to help pay for that work. We had several study sessions with the city council had some study sessions and we we ended up with a bunch of changes. Including changes to the subdivision ordinance and those all got through and passed and they are now. Codified. Well, they're maybe not codified on the website yet. We're waiting for the codifier to do that, but. But they are, they are effective. What we want to do now is maybe focus on things that are not related to residential, but that. We've just noticed over the years, maybe needs a relook. And some things. So this is kind of a combination of. Things that frustrate Christie at the counter when she's talking to people or or because we see. Post COVID and emphasis on people just trying to scrape out any type of business that they can. And so they're coming up with creative ways to have businesses either in their home or with food trucks or. Sales or things like that, so. And this is not meant to be the the only topic, so I want this to today to be kind of a discussion or. Conversation about. Things that we see, but also if you come up with something that you see. We, what we're trying to do is kind of. Determine. What types of topics we want to be studying in twenty twenty four and and working through. So. Yeah, go ahead, Chris. We've got a PowerPoint so that. It's a lot more colorful than the staff report. For all all of us visual learners. So the, the one thing I wanted, I I know I've said this before. And I'm gonna keep saying it until you're tired of it is the idea of objective development standards that is really a big push. From the state. And the opposite of that is is discretionary or subjective review. So. For most of my planning career. The. There were the planning commission was reviewing C U Ps, reviewing variances, like they were like. The developer would bring or the property owner would bring you an idea and you would decide if you liked it or not and. And there was a lot of subjectivity to it and it depended on. You know, the five of you and and how how you felt that night or or whatever. And I'm I'm only, I'm not talking about you guys specifically. I'm talking about planning commissions in general and. And, you know, some commissions would base their decisions on on standards or policies and and sometimes they wouldn't. And what I'm seeing is a push to get away from that, I think, because. In other parts of the state. Developers have complained and said, hey, we we need a, we need to know what the rules are. We can't just. Go in and do all this work and then have somebody deny it and not tell us why. And so. So the push for objective development standards means that instead of us waiting for a developer to put a package. Together and show it to us, we come up with, here are our standards for what we want to see in development in Lamoore. And then the developer can see those standards. They can read it on the website. And then they can design a project that meets those standards and if it meets it, he gets to build it and if it doesn't. If it's really, if it's really off, we we don't approve it. If it's a little bit off, we'll, we figure out how to make it work. So. It's, it requires us to. Think ahead and and to say, well, to not not look at the project, but look at. Conceptually at things like, well, how, why do we want our sidewalks to be? How, what kind of street trees do we want to have? And so it's it's all of these little elements that then the developer has to put together. So. The first one that we is is about. The street cross section and I know we have at least one council member who would like our sidewalks to be wider. And so that's a question we're bringing forward. Is that something you think we should be talking about is like, what does our? Typical residential street. How should it get built? Right now, it's the streets forty feet wide. There's a five foot sidewalk and we give the developer the choice of whether he wants to put it. Put the sidewalk right up against the curb or to put it back and have a parkway, like a five foot parkway in between. The only. Thing we require is that. That it's consistent throughout that development. So. You know, things we can discuss are. Do we, do we still want a parkway? I've heard a lot of people complain about the parkways. They're too hard to maintain. Homeowners don't maintain them. They. They don't like them. They they like to be able to pull up to the curb and get out right onto the sidewalk. Is, is forty feet. Still the right width. Some cities have gone a little narrower. But forty feet is kind of where a lot of cities are coming down on curb to curb residential street width. Those are just things like that. And if you, if you want to jump in and have a discussion, we can. If if you're quiet, I'm gonna move on to the next thing and we'll see how.
I'm gonna go on the record as I love parkways.
Okay.
I know maybe some of the commissioners don't.
I will go on the record that I do not. And for obvious reasons.
I know.
Walk down the street. We got pyramids in our sidewalks.
Yes.
Throughout this town, but skateboarders might like, okay?
Yeah.
It's dangerous for people walking. It's dangerous for people with wheelchairs or walkers. It tears up sidewalks. It tears up curbs and gutters. And it's a right or wrong. It's a homeowner's responsibility to pay for all that when it gets torn up. But they have no choice but to put it in. And I think we ought to be monolithic and not have street trees.
I'm okay with street trees as long as it says a street tree is ten feet from the street, so it doesn't have to go in that parkway. Because that's what's causing the problem. And I'm just worried about the future. I drive down some of these new subdivisions. They're only five years old and I'm like, ah, we're already seeing these huge trees growing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the fence about the whole, I mean aesthetically, I think it looks nice. I like it. It definitely. It definitely has more curb appeal. But the problem is, is the homeowner gonna maintain it? And then I also have an issue with if you're a homeowner and you buy. You're forced into something that you may or may not want. And then when it does get damaged, you get the bill. And so that's, you know, that's kind of where I am personally. I I wouldn't. I would like to have it, but I also wouldn't want to be forced into it. And then if something, something was done that was beyond my. Choice or anything I did, now I'm on the hook for. I mean, who knows what it is now with the cost of concrete and everything else. You could be fifteen, twenty grand or more.
I'm okay with parkways. My my thing is if we didn't have to put the street tree in that parkway, if it was just either. No vegetation or bark dust gravel, something like that. Or just some kind of low maintenance ground cover. But I think that's the trees that are just getting us.
Yeah, it's not the parkway, something trees.
Yeah, they're just causing so much. It's like you said. It's, it's, we're only five to ten years out and sidewalks up and down these new subdivisions. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think low vegetation, ground cover, like you said, would be a great option to still keep them, but. You don't have to worry about as many issues five and fifteen years down the road.
Okay, so it sounds like come back with a few options.
What are the city standards now on street trees? Do you know off the top of your head?
The street trees is required. One, I think it's one and one per house.
One per house or certain lot size or something, maybe a corner lot requires more.
One now. It was two. It was two before.
Was it two? Okay, sorry, two per house.
Might be two, yeah.
Now, is there a way to shift that on to the actual property and get it?
Well, that isn't, yeah, that is an option we've talked about, especially if you go to a monolithic sidewalk is just say. You have to plant a street, you have to plant a tree. You know, on the property, but you know, in the first ten feet or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
I concur with my fellow commissioners.
Yeah, do you, huh?
Yes.
Because they're not all in agreement.
Yeah, I would. I would, I wouldn't. Yeah, I I wouldn't eliminate it. I would, I'd like to see some options.
Okay, so we'll come up with some options on how, what, what to do.
I like to say I would give on this. If we're putting in like bark out in that parkway, no trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
No trees unless the city wants to take the responsibility to replace sidewalks and replace curb and gutter and all of that. Now to the cost of about fifteen thousand dollars per lot.
Yeah, okay. So that kind of moves into landscape standards. They're, that kind of goes hand in hand. I took these pictures, I took these pictures in Visalia, but I was trying to. To. Make pictures that kind of made a point. So you've got the top left and the top right look really look pretty well kept up. You can't have grass in the parkway anymore. The bottom left is. Very low maintenance, just all bark. I don't know that our current landscape standard would allow that. But I also don't know that if somebody went and did that, that we would send code enforcement out because they've got. A lot better things to do. And then you've got one of the bottom right where they're just, just not keeping it up. One of the things I've noticed is, you know, that the, with the. Wello standards for front yards now. You can only have twenty five percent of the front yard. In turf. And sometimes that's so small, but. But people put the developers put it in anyways and it's like. Why even bother? It's so small. Why not just put the whole thing in shrubs?
You don't even need a mower. You can just go out with a pair of hedge clippers and take care of it. Century homes down in Hanford on Hume and. Twelve, they went to zero skate. So it's just bark dust and minor little trees like you see in the top. Right corner picture that Steve has on here. It's more like that, but no turf. They they've eliminated the turf, so. They did that just. Just. Because it's California now, you know, the, just the constant watering and stuff like that. Right.
Well, and it is hard to meet the wello requirements. A lot of the landscape plans have to go through three, four submittals before we approve them because. They're just not meeting them.
And here's the thing, when homeowners are moving in, I'm seeing this a lot in Hanford. They're moving in. And within two weeks, they're ripping out.
They're ripping stuff out.
They're ripping out what's been put in there. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Which is so, which, you know, you you're not gonna stop that.
Right.
But the, the, the law, when I read the law, it was so optimistic and not realistic. It talks about how the. The home builder is supposed to have a conversation with the buyer about how to. Run the sprinkler system and all of this and it's like, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, that's, I think that's in the Cal Green Code. You're supposed to have all this stuff and explain to them. I'm like, that doesn't happen.
Doesn't happen.
So.
Okay, so come back with some, some, yeah, some ideas.
Yeah.
Are there, how do you feel about? I don't have a slide for this, but like commercial landscaping, does it seem like, like the new commercial projects are looking good? In your eyes?
I can't think of any offhand that I. Think of an eyesore.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we'll maybe stay focused on residential. What's the next slide? So there's a, I I left one of the. Slide, one of the pictures out. There's actually six. Trees in our heritage oak, heritage tree ordinance that are protected. The valley oak, the magnolia ash, California sycamore, Modesto ash. Italian stone pine, that's the one that's missing. And California fan palm, so. The question that's, we hardly ever look at this, but somebody came to the counter about a few, couple months ago and. Had an oak tree in his backyard. It looked like it was gonna fall over. It was just so leaning and. And we had to look at this and go, well, you're gonna need an arborist to tell you that it's. A safety hazard and before we'll give you a permit to take it down and stuff like that. And so. I know in in Visalia, they are very. Big on protecting valley oak trees, but that's the only tree they protect. And. It's a little different there. I mean, Visalia used to be an oak forest. I don't think Lamoore has that. Historical heritage. So the question is, you know, how much do we? Want to enforce this? Do, and if we do, do we need to change it? One thing I noted. When I was looking at it again today, just prepping for this, is that. This only applies to trees that are twelve inches or more in diameter. So. So most of the tree, maybe not the oak tree, but the. Couple of those trees. They're not technically protected. They'd have to get much bigger first.
So once they get big enough, then they're protected.
Then they're protected.
Oh, I got you.
So. So I guess the the trying to get a gauge for is, is this something that Lamoore? Wants to keep doing? Do we want to invest? Our staff time in this? I mean. You. You say, of course, we want to protect the trees, but do we want to, because, but it takes an investment. It takes an investment of Christie's time. Other some other people's time. It takes talking to the property owners and telling them why they can't. Take a tree down when they want to and things like that, so.
We have water issues too.
And we have water issues. Now, the one thing I, because I talked to one of our landscape architects is that. Each of these on the list are low water trees, so that's at least one plus. Did you even, did you even know we had this?
I did not. I mean, is this a state law or is it just something?
No.
Okay, okay.
It's, it was. There's a policy in the general plan to adopt a heritage tree ordinance. And then this is what came out of it and it looked like it, it looks like it's been on the books since. Two thousand twelve.
Yeah. You know, when I did code enforcement, I would say the top three complaints I got was if you look in the top left corner picture there. Is somebody else's tree causing issues with the neighbor?
It's way over on.
And there's nothing I could do about it. You know, it was just. I don't know, it was constant and sometimes I would refer them to. I believe the state law was you can go straight up your property.
Trim it and trim it.
Don't, don't step foot on their property. I mentioned that to someone. It did not go good. The neighbor went and you should have seen this thing. It was straight up cut. I mean, it was, it was awful.
The tree look.
So my boss was like, don't ever talk to them about that again. Yeah. The problem is. Neighbors having issues with each others and. Boy, that tree just looks like it tearing up sidewalks and dropping. I don't know. I didn't even know this existed, like you said.
Yeah, for the, for the most part of the city. This isn't gonna be an issue.
Yeah.
It's, most of this is. Like, right around here. Especially with the oak trees. I mean, you're, there's no oak trees in my neighborhood. It's not old enough, but. My neighbor does have some of those palm trees and he, he hates them. But he did tell me that. He goes, it's almost impossible for me to get him cut down.
Really?
Because, well, because he. He or she came and talked to somebody at the city one time a few years ago.
Told them now. What's that? Oh, they won't. The dump will take palm trees, that's right.
Take that either, yeah. Yeah. And they spend a lot of money. Having somebody come out and trim them every couple of years.
Because when those catch on fire, I've seen them. They're a roaming candle. They just go. Especially with the dead stuff underneath there.
Yeah, I think that'd be something to really look into about. Possibly eliminating.
Has this gone?
Suggesting.
Yeah.
See, I see. I see two scenarios. Because you're right, there, there's some, most parts of the city don't have trees this big. So you've, the first scenario is the older part of town. Somebody's got it either in their front yard or their backyard and. It's finally becoming a menace. And so now there's gonna be this confrontation between the owner that finally wants to take the tree down and the city. The other scenario is new development out in the countryside. Where these trees have been growing on, at the edge of farmland. So the question is, should the developer incorporate that tree into their development design? Or do they get to, you know, cut it down? And just build whatever they want. So I know the, if you remember the the Wathacastanos project. Off of Bush. They had a remainder area. There's a, there were, there was a house and a bunch of trees. And they tore down the house, but they kept two of the oak trees because of of this. And they're not sure yet how, what they're gonna design, but those trees are still there. Because of this. They, they took out all the other trees.
Steve, I have a question. Situation, if there's a swimming pool next to the swimming pool, there's a fence, of course. You've got leaves always going into that person's swimming pool. If that tree was there first. And then they put swim pool in, sat person with the swim pool say, hey, you gotta get rid of your tree. It's going all into my, my new swimming pool. Or is that an issue?
What's that? Civil issue?
Yeah, and I can't imagine any law that says.
I know.
You can't, you can't force your neighbor to get rid of their tree because you're.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
The winds blow and.
Yeah.
So, so if the, if the. Swimming pool's ready there, someone puts in the tree. Get the gentleman with the swimming pool, say, hey. Don't put that tree there, go to the city and. Make a snake, how would that work?
They would say it's civil. Yeah.
Who would say?
The the city would tell them it's civil.
The city would say it's not, it's not our issue until it gets twelve inches in diameter.
Yeah.
According to the law that's on the books.
Yeah. The the palm trees, and this, I'm thinking about the IGA grocery store. I think those things are dangerous. When the wind blows, some of those fronds come down. It can be pretty good sized, all those cars that in the parking lot or. No cars in the parking lot, you drive through there sometimes. My God, if that hits somebody, it could. And it doesn't provide a whole lot of shade as far as I'm concerned, I think. Provides a whole bunch of mess and maybe some it's employment for somebody cuts them down and cleans them up, but uh. It sure doesn't beautify our city as far as I can tell.
Yeah, I know even, you know, for what a, a century. Los Angeles kind of. Adopted the palm tree. As their symbol, and even they are not planting any new ones now. And if they're, if they take any out, they're not replanting it, they're planting other trees.
My thoughts on this tree ordinance is. Christie is the one, or you know, the staff down there that gets the brunt of this. I want to take down the street where we, them as a government are telling citizens, you can't because we have this ordinance. I would revisit just for the citizens' benefit. If we were to revisit. This ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah. So here's the thing, can't tear it down, city says no, they do it anyways, is there a fine?
In Visalia, it's a thousand dollar fine.
The thousand dollars.
And. Probably an article in the newspaper.
And they probably have to.
And the newspaper usually sides with the homeowner.
And then it's probably, you have to replace that tree. They probably, thousand dollars, and then if you get, don't replace.
Even if you do it, even if you, what is it? In Visalia, if an arborist says this tree is diseased and needs to be taken out. You still have to mitigate. You still have to. Either plant. Four new trees or or pay, or paying in Luffy. So, no, Visalia is pretty strong on the Valley Oak tree.
Yeah.
I mean, their baseball team used to be named the Oaks, come on.
Okay.
All right, I think, I think we've got good direction on that. We'll keep rolling. Home occupations, so home occupation is not somebody just working from home. For their employer in San Francisco, the, a home occupation is you are the owner of a business. And your business is based in your home. So that could be an accountant who has an off, has it, has turned a bedroom into an office. It could be somebody giving piano lessons. It could be. A contractor who doesn't have a. A yard, he just has a truck and some tools. But it seems like we're seeing. More people wanting to do things. And. This used to be. Pretty heavily regulated. You know, like, not regulated, but we had a lot of restrictions. With, and I think the intention was to. To protect the neighborhood and keep it residential and quiet and pure and all of this. And. One of them was, one of the. Common. Standard conditions in most cities, home occupation ordinances was. Uh, no more than one delivery per day. Well. Amazon has like shut that to heck, so that's, that's just not, it's, it's just so common to see UPS and delivery trucks. In neighborhoods now that you don't need that type of, of requirement anymore. So. So we, we think we should revisit this and have some discussions and find out, you know, what is? What do people really think, like, how? How much leeway should we give people that want to have a business in their home? Versus. Putting restrictions on them so that they don't. You know, tick off their neighbors. What's that? Oh, yes, and so that, that's always a big question is, can you? Can someone who's running a home occupation have customers come to their home? So we, we kind of. Dance through that, it's like, well, if it's piano lessons, that's fine, but if.
But that's the whole thing, like you said, is protect the neighborhood. It's trying to limit that one customer at a time, so let's say somebody's running up, they're cutting hair. You know, out of their house, it's usually one customer at a time, piano lessons, one customer at a time. But if they're selling, like you have here jars of jelly. Three people are pulling up and they're constantly pulling in front of your house all the time. That's when it becomes an issue, so the occupation for the, the business is all about how many customers can you expect in a day? It's always seems like why we have these rules and laws is to protect the neighborhood.
I think if it comes down, it it'd be. You know, parking issues, what, what can you safely park? If if you can't. Safely park within the law. You know, whoever it is. Cause you start getting into telling somebody, okay, what visitor they can have and how many. That's kind of. You know, I I don't really want to go there, but maybe something of, if if it's. If they're, if they're not able to safely park within the law of your business. Then they need to either come back later or you need to find a different option for. Um, how you conduct that business.
Yeah. So right now, there are certain home occupations that are allowed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is cottage food business one of them?
Yeah, cottage food is a specific type of home occupation that also requires. Um, permits from the county health department.
They do, okay.
Like that, so, but it's, um. It was, it was, it's one of those state override. Issues where, where it tells it. That cities can't. Prohibit cottage food. Operations, they have to allow them as home occupations. Uh, I don't know that we've. Gotten that many. Oh, we do, okay.
Well, you had one lady that was selling cookies and she doesn't do it anymore, and she was very popular over in my neighborhood. No, I didn't object, it was great, so, yeah, yeah, it was great. Okay.
Parking, what? Oh, I thought we were gonna talk about that when we talked about food trucks. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's another issue, not just customer parking, but if someone has a large vehicle. Like, where do they have to park it, how many can they have? Is that becoming a nuisance? Uh, we've had that discussion a few times, cause I've got. Um. I've got a neighbor who has one of like the Snap-on tool. Van. And he just parks it in the street every night. And it's like. I've gotten used to it. But is that something that? That we should regulate, should we force them to park it in the driveway? I don't know.
Yeah. So there's a, there's somebody that just bought a house. In Hanford, I drive by it almost every other day. And he has three work trucks. So one goes in front of his house and the other two go in front of neighbors' houses. So with something where we could revisit this. And it limits how many vehicles the business can have and all that stuff. Yeah, I think, cause I, he's not limited.
Yeah, I think that, that's an issue unless, of course, you know, you had, you know, if a neighbor doesn't, you know, if my neighbor had a work truck and. I said, yeah, he he can park in front of my house, I'm fine with that. I think that, you know, it's, I don't know where you draw the line because.
Yeah.
I agree, you absolutely shouldn't be part, I wouldn't want somebody parking in front of my property if I didn't want them there. But if, you know, if I told somebody, hey, I have. You know, a corner lot, I have extra curbing, yeah, go ahead, I'm fine with them parking there, I think if. If somebody's okay with that, it should be allowed, but you know, it's just where do you draw that line?
Okay.
There's a tough one, cause. The person trying to park can say that, you know, it's a public street. Yeah, I can park where I want, so I think that.
Oh, it happens.
So, yeah, so I think. Yeah, you know, if you want to avoid that, you have to have some type of regulations.
Yeah, I I never want to stifle business, but at the same time, you know, you don't want to just have a free for all and, cause not everybody's as. Courteous as others, so.
Alright, next one. We're all, we all keep accumulating stuff. And. If. Especially if the houses are. Getting on smaller lots, we need mini storages. This was just an idea, Fresno and Clovis actually allow mini storages in residential zones. With a use permit. Uh, Daryl's Mini Storage has good political pull in Fresno, um, so, um. So these are some examples, this is in, this is in Fresno, so you, you can see how like there's too many storages there. Um, and it's mostly surrounded by residential uses. And. I think in Lamoore, we only allow them in the industrial zone and is it regional commercial? Regional commercial zone, so that. Pretty much limits it. Um. Probably to south of one ninety-eight. And. So that just brings up the question, it's like. Is that something we think we need? Um, some, like I said, some cities do it, most. Don't. But we thought, well, you know, given the. The ba, the base, people coming and going, they might have, they might have need for storage. Is it something we're? Want to entertain?
Just, just curious would. If, if I wanted to build a mini storage, would I be able to find land in a residential zone cheaper than I would be? Than it would be if it was out in industrial? I'm just wondering why they. Would want to put these in 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 a residential zone? If they could find land cheaper somewhere, maybe they can't.
I think, cause it would fill up pretty quick. Look at all these, like this one picture right here. I would say maybe five percent of those houses have a mini storage probably at that location. It would fill up pretty quick, they're trying to bring it, they're trying to bring.
They're trying to be as close to their customers as they can.
The whole reason.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has the city requi, received a lot of requests from. Storage places or anything like that, no, so it's kind of not an.
It's a issue, it's more of our issue, just.
More of your issue.
Like. What do you think of this?
You know, I, I wouldn't have a problem if they looked like the ones that. Daryl's Mini Storage puts up, is, is you drive by some of those, it looks like you're going by a gated community.
Yeah.
You have no idea what's back there.
No, they, they, they designed it pretty, the front pretty well, yeah.
Yeah, I think the one on Mooney and Visalia, I think he's got fountains in front of it, and I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I, I wouldn't be. I mean. The, the traffic might be an issue or who's coming and going, but like you say, generally speaking, it's gonna be local residents, you're not gonna get out of towners that are trying to. Find storage in the middle of somebody's town, they're gonna look for something. Out of town, but uh. I think it'd be good to help accommodate military too with it.
Would it be something that you would say, let's say it isn't residential, but it has to be on a certain size street, or what do they call them, art?
Arterials are collectors.
Or something, you can make it on that, not.
We could put some standard, some design standards.
Yeah, that way it can handle the flow. Yeah.
I think, I think for us, it would give us some options too to fill some, you know, properties that are a little problematic, either they're backed up against the. Highway freeway, or they're just in, they're in.
The site on.
They're an odd, like, what is that, nineteen and a half and over in that area, just some odd shaped properties that would be hard to develop. Other than say something like this.
Well, you know, we've got one on D Street, D and pretty close to Eighteenth. And then off of Eighteenth, there's a, those things are full.
Yeah.
There's a waiting list and. A lot of it is military, but a lot of it is not also, is people don't have enough room in their garage, yeah, there's stuff.
There's some stuff, yeah.
And so finding areas, like you said. Maybe, you know, backed up against the freeway or something like that, to put twenty or thirty units in, make them look nice. Why not? Maybe it's a good use of land.
Yeah. I agree. Might be another thing where you say, okay, if it's in this certain residential zone, you're limited to so many units, that could be something too, cause that limits traffic.
Limit the size.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think if you allow this, I think you'd get a. Quite a few permits in the first couple of years. People want to build them, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
What's that?
Have, have. Maybe. You can only only allow so many within a certain radius of each other, so that, you know. They all all show up.
Yeah, you don't have a cluster of them in one neighborhood.
Alright, we can come up with some. Some ideas for that. So the next one is Christie's favorite.
Oh, boy.
Mobile food trucks. There's. There's, there's a few issues with mobile food trucks, one is historically. The brick and mortar restaurants have opposed them just flat out. Um, and that's, I'm speaking every city. Um, but it does seem like that's. Not as strong as it used to be. Be, I think because mobile food trucks are. Getting more popular. Uh, and. So. Lamoore's current ordinance says you can have them if they're a thousand feet away from. A regular restaurant, which. Which really limits where they can go. So we approve an or, we approve a permit every once in a while. Now, we had one go in last week without a permit. And sent, sent PD out to.
Yep.
Take them.
It was all over. Everybody knew about that one, so, sorry.
I must have missed it, where was that?
Yeah, so.
That the car wash. Across from the high school. Oh, that's right. He was issued a, issued a business license.
Oh, yeah, I figured it was it, yeah. Yeah, see, I'm. I'm biased, cause I'm tired of driving out to the palace just to get a. Some good taco truck, so.
Yes, there's plenty to choose from out there, isn't there? Steve, if you don't know what we're talking about, you should drive out.
Yeah, you can get six or seven of them within, I don't know.
Yeah, you can take the whole family and all five of you can have a different talk, um, different food item from a different truck.
Okay.
One of our restaurants here in town has a truck out there.
Yeah, they owns, yeah.
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 Well, and see, that's the other thing, is there's a lot of brick and mortar restaurants. That are.
That are doing this.
That are doing it themselves, so.
I've, I've been to, I've been to other cities to where, I mean, obviously, if it's a competitor, you know, you you're a competitor, you're not gonna be jumping for joy that somebody's coming in and cutting in your business. But I've seen where some cities are really embracing it. But they're also setting high standards for how it's set up, you know, how your awnings are and your, your tables and your cleanup, and you have to have trash and. If it's a certain size, even some of them, they're requiring to have like a wash station, you know, for their patrons and things like that, so I. I think if it's done right, it it can be good for both. You know, the business and the people that are, um, you know, going there, but. You wouldn't want a free for all because I've seen some of them where it's just, there's trash everywhere.
Yeah. So you kind of, you hit it exactly, is, are there hand washing stations, are there all of this? Another thing is limit. How many permits can be issued at a time? It's.
Within a certain.
Yeah, they need to come in with.
Radius.
The landowner's permission.
Yeah.
You do that anyways.
That's a given.
Yeah. All that stuff.
We, we look for, we look for safety, like if they're in a parking lot, we look for where they're gonna be parked and make sure that's.
Yeah.
That the parking lot is still flowing safely, things like that, so. Um. Yeah, so there's a lot of things we do, it's, it's more about. I think. Do you want to? Change things that would promote them more, cause I think the thousand foot. Distance limit. Is a, is a big hindrance. And, and is, is that really what's necessary? Cause. A lot, it seems like now, sometimes you. Because a lot, it seems like now, sometimes you, they do better when there's two and three together.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I'm thinking like if, if uh. You know, if, if a. Let's say uh the, the sandwich shop doesn't want competition. They can, they can tell their landlord, hey, don't approve putting a food truck out in front of my shop.
Yeah.
Or I'm gonna break or like, yeah, write that in the lease or something, but um. So there's, yeah, it's, it's, it's more of just, I think we see the times have changed, are changing for food trucks, they're getting more popular. And, you know, what do we want to do?
Yeah, you know what the city of Portland, Oregon did years ago was they designate, what's that? They designated a certain area for food trucks.
Mm-hmm.
And it was such a success. And the local restaurants in the area claimed that their business increased also because people came there. More people came there, so that's another thing is. Designating a certain area, now I know the city doesn't own this or anything like that, but that's an idea also. If, if the city council or anybody wants to think about that in the future is designated areas where multiple trucks, like you had said.
Mm-hmm.
Could set up. And um powers provided, all that stuff, I, I'm not a fan of the generators constantly going, it's loud. You know, to, to power them and everything, but that could be another thing where it's a, it's a place. Not like a swap meet, but a place, a designated area that mobile food trucks could come in. And, you know, that might be something for some entrepreneur, say, hey, I'm going to take this plot of land, pave it, make it nice, restrooms. You know, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Clovis, Clovis just did something like.
Did they?
Yeah, they have a, it's like a lunch truck, um, area and I, yeah, I mean, I work in Ag, so we're all over the place and I know guys that are coming from Madera. I mean, it's, it's, I'm, I'm not gonna, I don't know the numbers, but I know it's drawing people in because it's trendy and it's.
Yeah.
It catches attention and, you know, so you never know, it could, it could draw business from out of town and like say, help, you know, help neighboring businesses.
The only thing I, I would hate to see is so many food trucks come in that brick and mortar restaurants avoid opening. Because they're worried about the competition, so that's something to think about too.
Okay.
Not to stifle competition, you know, to make it.
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and then so then the other part of the issue is where do they go when they're done, when they're not serving?
Hmm.
And so you have one, Christie showed me a picture of one. That's, you know, parked in the driveway, but not really parked in the driveway, they're parking on the dirt.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
We're not really sure if they might be actually be encroaching onto the neighbor's property. And so how do you, how do you deal with that?
Kind of the nice thing about that designated area that up in Portland is it's, they stay there.
They stay there.
Yeah, they leave them there, yeah. But, yeah, that's another, that goes back to the home occupation business, right, where it's parked and everything.
All right, next one. Temporary uses, this is kind of a catchall for any type of. Usually outdoor temporary business, so Christmas tree sales, carnival. Um craft show, things like that, we would be issuing, we issue temporary use permits. And it's usually to, we're looking for, for safety issues, like is there, is it, is it going to be laid out in a safe fashion? That, that fire can get around if they need to. I know, I think, I think we still require proof of insurance. If it's on a public site, like if it's in a park or something like that, so. This one, it's. Um there, I don't know that there's any bit, any major issues, but it's, it's one where was this like, well, we haven't looked at it in a long time. Like, should we look at it and see if there's something that needs to be updated? But it's one, uh, it's, it's kind of a catchall because it can, it can cover, like I say, just, you know. Somebody selling Christmas trees in the parking lot versus where they. The one where the, somebody wanted to have the, the cannabis event out at the racetrack a few years ago and. That turned into a big thing where we actually had to make findings for why we're denying. The temporary use permit, just, just to cover ourselves.
Yeah.
So do you think that, or does staff think that there's something on the, those use permits that need to be adjusted?
I don't have anything specific, but it, but it's partly because I just haven't looked at it in a long time.
Because I usually have to fill one out every year when we do our brew fest.
Hmm, yes.
I don't, don't remember seeing anything on there that I thought. Well, this, this is ridiculous or.
Yeah, the uses that are like an annual thing, like the brew fest, I think. Some point in the past, everything got worked out, and if you do it the same way every year, we just approve it. Because it's all been worked out. Yeah, it's the ones that are the new, unique ones that you have to work through and say, okay, how, how do we make this work? And then if they come back the next year, then they just approve it the same way you did the last year and it's, and it works fine. Oh, do we, do we issue permits for that? Oh, so, one that we've never been able to get a handle on are these um. Pop-up sales or the pop-up free phone giveaways. They're, we're not issuing permits for those and they're not asking. And it's just kind of been like, what do we, what do we do?
There's nothing safe about those, they cover sidewalks or they just go into parking lots. I've never been a fan of those.
Yeah.
That's just me.
They don't even ask permission.
Yeah.
Most of them, I don't think.
I.
They just set it up.
Not a fan. Yeah, sorry, it's bringing me back to my code enforcement days, sorry. Yeah. Just, they don't care. Well, I would say revisit this if it's an issue. But it, or can potentially, building conflict for final map is approved, oh, wow.
I looked at this, new, there's this new law. And I looked at it again, it actually, there's a limit on it, this is only for. Developments of ten homes or less, so not as freaked out as I was at first, but. Um it's still, anytime you're. You give the developer the right to pull a building permit before the property lines are set, that just sounds like setback nightmare to me. So, um I actually gave this law to our, one of our surveyors and said. Read this from a surveyor point of view and tell me what we need to add to our codes before July to, to make this work. So.
So it's not a hundred unit?
No, it doesn't work for a hundred units, it's for ten units and, and in looking at the law again, it's like, they, they tried to. Dig out this niche for small developers, I guess they're, it's a Sacramento, trying to give them a break or something, but. But it's like, why would you allow them to do things out of order like that? It just can cause all kinds of problems.
It's almost like it's forcing you to approve the map after, I mean, when foundations are poured, I know, well, it's done. And you're going to cost us money if you change the, you know, the map or whatever, you know, before it's.
Yeah.
Man. Boy, that's something for you guys to.
And they don't ever want to, yeah, I don't think we could get away with telling somebody, hey, you poured your foundation a foot off. You're gonna have to rip it up and do it again. But. So that one's more, we're going to look at that. The only good thing they did in, in that law was they made it effective July first instead of January first, so. Somebody must have realized that cities needed some time to prepare for this. Um highway oriented signs. We got a whole, we got a new one, I think this was.
Yeah. That's out there.
I've, I've been in Lemoore ten years now, and I think this is the first highway oriented sign that's been approved while I've been here, so. I think it turned out pretty well, we had to. Make them make a few modifications to it before we approved it, so the standards seemed to work. The, the one that I think could trip people up in the future. People meaning commercial owners is. Unless you are a really large user, like, like a Walmart or a Costco. You, you have to do a combined sign.
Hmm.
And if you're the first one, you have to build a big sign and then hope that somebody else develops around you and. Puts their signs on your sign. So, um, I like that from an aesthetic point of view. From a practical point of view, it's, it's harder to tell people to do that, in, in this case, they were okay with it. Uh because they had a few businesses in there and, and wanted to do it that way, so. Again, this is one, we may not need to review this one, but I wanted, we wanted to bring it up. And see what you thought, I wanted to see what you guys thought of that sign, how it, how it looks, I don't know if you spent time looking at it. From a planning commissioner perspective, um, yeah.
No, it looks good, you come up the highway there.
Yeah.
You, you can definitely see it and you see everything that's going on there.
Especially with Maverick coming in.
And it looks good.
That's what I was about to say.
Maverick is gonna, Maverick will ask for one.
And they're going to have probably multiple businesses, don't you think, they're going to be Matt, well, you never know, maybe a Cinnabon or anything. The one thing I'd hate though is to limit how close they are, you guys, when we go up the ninety-nine, you get to Modesto. Interlock, oh my gosh, it's just these signs, one after the other, it seems like, so. I mean, they're.
We do have.
Everywhere.
We do have a separation.
Oh, do you?
Do you know, remember what it is? You probably don't, I don't either.
Not that we would have that problem here, but you never know, two years from now, yeah.
Never know.
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay, so that might be one we're, we're okay with. Uh, last one, front yard fences in single family homes, so. Again, these are all from Visalia, so that first one top left, I was so excited to find something like that. Because that is the reason why we have a requirement for low front yard fences. Because to me, that just looks really tacky.
Oh, I could have got you a picture like that if you really needed it.
Oh, really? Fence in your front yard like that, so, so our, our standard. Height in the front yard is three and a half feet and uh one of the things we've kicked around is, is going to four feet. Um mainly because four feet is much more standard. Width or height when you're at Home Depot for chain link fence or for.
Oh, right.
For, for pickets and things like that. The other one we wanted to consider was if you look at, I think it's the bottom. Right? That one, the, the fence is four, is four feet, but the, but the posts are taller.
Hmm.
And so the question is, should you allow something like that, because if you, the letter of the code would be, no, the posts have to be four feet as well. So, um allowing the post to be a little taller than four feet. Um would give a little bit more leeway to people on how they design something.
Well, speaking from a fence building background.
Oh.
That's how I got through college, built a fence, uh, four foot chain link fence, the posts really need to be two, maybe two and a half inches taller. Than the fabric and that's to get the, the apparatus to tighten everything up.
Hmm.
So it's not like they're sticking up six inches or a foot or something like that. That's, that's not that obtrusive, I don't believe.
No, and I think we, I think we just, we usually ignore that.
Yeah.
Um. But, and then there's some people, like they'll do the four foot fence, but they'll want a gate to be taller. Or, or big, or pillars, like an entryway, so, so is that, should that be allowable?
Would it be four foot tall and it could also be solid, like a cedar fence? Would it be any kind of fence? Chain link or, or solid?
Be whatever we want, but I think that's the idea, that it can be four foot solid.
Yeah, I'd want, I'd want some type of standard, because I wouldn't want to drive through a neighborhood or start to see the neighborhoods go to where it's like. This one's got a solid redwood fence and this one's got wrought iron and it's just, it just starts to become more of an eyesore than.
I don't know that we can do that, but, I mean, we could.
Could it go right up to the sidewalk? That's another thing.
It's not supposed to be on, in the right of way.
Yeah, so it can go right up to the edge.
That's one of the downsides of going to the monolithic sidewalk. Is that most people assume that they own to the back of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And they don't, if you have a monolithic sidewalk, and so, I know I've argued with people over the years. Telling them, no, you can't put it there because that's not your property.
Hmm.
And, and then. They finally understand and then they go build it anyways on a Sunday. Um, so.
How far back from the curb does it have to be in Lemoore? Is it ten feet?
Usually the, the, the typical right of way right now is the property line is ten feet behind the curb.
Okay, behind the curb, okay.
So if the sidewalk is up against the curb, then there's five feet.
Yeah.
And when people think that's part of their front yard, they want to fence it in and we have to say, no, that's not, you can't put the fence there. But you still have to landscape it. Oh, really? Oh, if it's fifty percent permeable, has to be, okay.
I wouldn't even have a problem with saying they could do that at four foot, like you say, for the standards, I mean, because you think about it, I mean. Who's really gonna, you know, I'm, I've never walked down the sidewalk and thought, well, I'm gonna go ahead and walk on this guy's grass because it's technically. You know. I just stay on the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Fence was up to a sidewalk, it wouldn't, it wouldn't bother me.
Go ahead.
What, no, for, for my own. Yes, so that's kind of my deal for my own ignorance, what is permeable? And I, I didn't, I didn't.
It means, oh, it means, it's, it's not solid, it's, it's.
Yeah, so it's like a chain link or rod iron.
Either chain link or wrought iron or a picket where the space between is the same width as the picket.
Yeah, so three out of those four pictures would be fifty percent, fifty percent permeable.
Which I, I actually think that looks better because you're not. I mean, I wouldn't think, with the exception of, of the person on the top left, most people don't put front fences to block.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a, you know, it's a bar, it's a barrier, you know.
So. At four foot. Go, if they. If they had it on the side and put it all the way down their driveway, that would be tough to see over, they're backing out unless you're in a truck. If it's permeable, it's not. If it's permeable, it's not a problem, but I'm thinking if it's, if it's a solid fence like, like the fence there on the ru- top right. On, on the very left side, that's a, their fence goes all the way to the sidewalk. If it's, if that's four feet and you're backing out, you don't, you can't see anything till you get out on the street.
Yeah.
Well, you don't see anything if it's the person backing out or the person coming down.
Either way.
Yeah.
Exactly, so it's not safe, it's not really not safe for anybody.
It might be.
So I think fifty percent permeable is something that kind of should stick, in my opinion.
So is there a way we can say any front yard fence has to be fifty percent permeable, whether it's. Up against the sidewalk or, you know, it's just, that's just a standard, all front yard fencing must be fifty percent permeable.
We could. We could.
Oh, it is, okay. I think, I think changing it to the four foot's good too. Cause it, correct me if I'm wrong. They said the four feet, but I've even talked to some, you know, people that say if you go less than that, say you go three and a half, you actually pay more. Because now you're gonna pay labor to cut down the standard.
Yes.
Exactly, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Chris, you're getting a lot of requests for, for solid fencing in the front yard. Yeah. But all of these would keep children in and, and pets.
Yeah, unless it was, yeah, it had, yeah, real small.
They might be more expensive than. Than the wood fence, but. Wood is really expensive.
It is.
That's one thing that I would see is that's where you run into, I mean, chain link's not overly expensive, but yeah, you definitely. You used to get into the wrought iron, things like that. It's gonna cost you more than just a standard, you know, cedar or redwood fence.
Okay, I think this gives us some ideas. I think, is that the last one? So, that's all I have, but is there anything that you guys have? Thought of or noticed now that you get the idea where we're going with this kind of stuff is like, just looking at an issue. That maybe we have on the books or maybe used to not be a problem, but now it's a problem. Now's the time to throw it out there and it doesn't have to be tonight, but if you think of something.
I think on the first one, that this, the standard local cross street section.
Yeah.
The, the width of the street was included in that, right?
Correct.
And we're at sixty now, if I remember.
The right of, yeah, the right of way is sixty and the pavement, the curb to curb is forty.
Is forty. But we have allowed less.
And I think there's been times in the past where they've been smaller.
Yeah.
And, um, if somebody wanted to do a private gated neighborhood, we'd probably look at something smaller.
If it was gated.
If it was gated, cause then it's, then it's an HOA, it's maintained by the property owners, it's not a city street.
It's neighborhood off of D. It has narrow streets and if you get a resident parking on each side, it then becomes a one-way street.
Yes.
Because unless you've got like a half a car, you're not gonna be able to pass.
Get through.
Yeah, in there.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I would be really opposed to reducing that width.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we're even gonna, gonna go there. In, in the past. Planners have tried to reduce streets and. It usually backfires. There's too much opposition from. Fire department, trash pickup, things like that, so.
Yeah, even now, you say with increased home deliveries, your Amazon, you, you know how much that's increased. I don't think that's another reason it wouldn't be a. It wouldn't be a good idea from a safety standpoint.
Hey, Steve. Oh, sorry. One thing I would add is, um, and this is kind of in the international zoning code. When a business closes, like Kmart, usually they're required within ninety days. You see this a lot of cities to bring their signs down. They're, you know what I mean? It's still up. That would be something I would, I would put on there.
I think it's already in there.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, I gotcha, okay.
Has there been any update of any potential, anything to do with that?
They're, they're working on some ideas.
I bet Nathan's working on it. He's probably like, I'm sick of this.
Yeah, Nathan's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Na- Nathan mentioned at a meeting we had earlier this week, last week, I guess was. Yeah, last Wednesday, right? Is that, that building's eighty thousand feet and evidently there's somebody, some, three different entities. It was like twenty.
Yeah.
Which, which leads to twenty, but the owners say, no, well, I'm ridiculous. If you're giving your price, why should you care? How it's divided up, but there's, there's interest, but there's, hasn't been interest, at least according to what Nathan said, for eighty thousand feet. So it's just a.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of. Businesses that need eighty thousand square feet that are in expansion mode right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got a question, since we're talking about that location. What's going on at Panda Express? They ever gonna open up? They didn't work today.
They're not open yet?
So Nate, Nathan told us, it was a PG&E issue.
Oh.
And so PG&E has finally got the parts they need.
Okay.
My cousin, my cousin's still waiting a year later for his shop for PG&E for, for.
Crazy?
Over a year.
Wow.
Hates. Ridiculous.
Sorry.
Okay.
Oh, number six?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I thought I did. Oh, I did not. I apologize. Okay. Commissioners, if you're okay, I need to, actually, I thought I did this to open for public comment. Steve, are you okay if I open this up?
Sure.
You're done, sorry. All right, we'd like to open up number six discussion to public comment at this time. Chrissy, any emails, things like that? No. Okay, I see nobody. So we'll close public comment on number six discussion. And commissioners, are we done with Steve on this for now? It sounds like this will be an issue that'll come back up.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so what we're gonna do is we're, we'll put together a work plan. We're gonna, well, we're gonna go to council. And have a sim- similar discussion.
Yeah.
If Nathan agrees. And then we'll have a work plan for twenty twenty-four.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's move to item number seven, director's report. Anything?
That's gonna be me.
Okay.
So we, we don't have any. Um, items for December, so we'll likely cancel the December planning commission meeting. There hasn't been a lot of new activity. Site, we had a one very minor site plan review. Somebody wanted to modify their parking lot. Um, how that was laid out. Um, but the, there was a, a council workshop. Last week about the housing element. I know a couple of you were there. Um, I'm gonna repeat word for word his forty-minute presentation right now. And, uh, but basically the, 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 the gist of the presentation, if I could summarize it down to twenty seconds was. Was we, with, it's time to do a new housing element. We're, we're again doing. A multi-jurisdictional housing element, which means the four cities and the county are all working together. They have one, there's one consultant that's being managed by the county staff. That is, um, putting together a document that will cover all five jurisdictions. We've had a lot of success with that in the past, and so everybody wants to do that again. And, um, something new this year for housing elements is that you have to study. Um, basically neighborhood equity, if you will. It's like, are there neighborhoods that are? Less than, they're not getting the same services or they don't have the same amenities. And then there's also maybe a, um, a racial or economic component that's going along with that. So identifying those, and then if you have them coming up with policies on how to rectify that. So that's, that's a new requirement in the housing elements this year. You still have the same requirements of. We have to identify vacant sites that are properly zoned for housing. And make sure that we have enough land zoned to meet the, the housing goals that the state put on us. So they're working on that as well. So, we'll likely bring you a draft. And then it will go to council. And then it will go to state HCD and they will mark it all up. And then we'll probably bring you a revised draft and then the council will adopt it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, move to item number eight, commission reports and requests, anything from the council?
The. Antford, Armona and nineteenth, there's a new sign up there about the surf car wash and free vacuuming coming soon. It's only been up there for a couple of days. So are we getting closer on that development or what?
So then, um, actually they have, somebody came in to pull their business license for the fuel station. I don't know what kind of fuel station it's gonna be and then surf through is going to be going in. Um, their final parcel map is in process, so we're expediting that. And as soon as we can get that recorded, you should start seeing construction. I believe they're ready to pull their building permits. So, and then as far as just because you guys got a little chatty. Panda Express, um, I've just, um, checked to see, I thought they got their power already. That's kind of been the. The major thing is they don't, they still don't have power, but they're moving forward. They just, you know, waiting on PG&E. So as soon as they get power, you probably, um, see them moving. You notice they have their drive-throughs all done and. And they're starting, I think they'll be started on the interior soon, so.
They probably kept claiming they never got the release from the city, huh? Sorry, I get that all the time.
Yeah, that one's been going pretty good, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Great.
That's it.
Anything else from the commissioners? No? Well, so we said there's no December meeting probably. Well, because there'd be no December meeting. That means we'll, we could possibly meet in January. At that time, uh, normally we vote for, uh, new chair and vice chair. And so I want to thank the commissioners for your vote for this year. Thank you so much. It's been an honor to be the chairman. I was very surprised last year when you guys voted. Thank you so much. And it is an honor to serve with you both, with all of you. Um, and to meet with you guys once a month. You guys work so hard. I know I say this every meeting, but thank you. You guys put in a lot of time and effort. To bring it for us so that we can criticize it. So, I appreciate it. Yeah, I know, I know. So thank you guys, everything. Thank you, chairmans. Um. I mean, yeah, um, commissioners, and I can't wait to see you guys again in January, cause I don't think I'm up this year. No, not till next year. So, no, no problem. So, okay. And if there's nothing else with that, we will close the meeting at six fifty-four PM.